Well, it's seven o'clock and I'd like to call the meeting to order. And I will turn it over to Dr. Burnham to confirm member access before we begin.
Good evening, everyone. As a preliminary matter, this is Dr. Burnham, Superintendent of Schools. I will do a roll call to confirm all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Chairperson Wendy Bertrand.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Carol Ashambo.
Yes.
Secretary Laura Kelly.
Yes.
Mr. Brian Leighton.
Yes.
Ms. Sophie Shapiro.
Yes.
And I'm not sure, do we have a student representative with us this evening?
I didn't.
I don't believe so. Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Recording secretary, Ms. Susan Summers.
Yes.
Business manager, Mr. Michael Cassidy.
Yes.
Interim Director of Teaching and Learning, Mrs. Annika Scott.
Yes.
IT Director, Mr. Steve Malandrinos.
Yes.
Athletic Director, Mr. James Bunnell.
Yes.
High School Principal, Mr. Rob McGrath.
Yes.
And our History Department Head, Mr. Warren Stevenson.
Yes.
Hi, Warren.
Hello.
All right, I will return this to the chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and is being broadcast over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel and streaming live on Facebook. And this meeting of the Lunenburg School Committee is being conducted remotely. The town of Lunenburg, in response to the COVID-19 coronavirus, is currently following the guidance from Lunenburg Board of Health, Massachusetts Department of Public Health, and the CDC regarding the virus, and steps communities can take to prevent the spread. And all town facilities are currently closed to the public. In accordance with the governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, GL 30A, Section 20, all public meetings are being conducted remotely. The order, which you can find posted on our town website on the COVID-19 Information Center page, accessed through the town manager's webpage, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. For the meeting, the Lunenburg School Committee is convening by telephone conference, video conference, via Zoom app, Facebook Live, as posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. For Zoom meetings, please note that this meeting is being recorded and some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be sure not to screen share your computer. Anything you broadcast may be captured by the recording. Meeting business ground rules. We're now turning to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective, clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I, Wendy Bertrand, the chair, will introduce each speaker on the agenda. When they conclude their remarks, the chair will go down the line of members inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold off until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you're not speaking. Please remember to also speak clearly in a way that helps accurate and generate accurate meeting minutes. For any response, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in colloquy with other members, please do so through the chair, taking care to identify yourself. For items with public comment, after members have spoken, the chair will afford public comment as follows. Any members of the public who wish to speak should identify their name and address, and they will be afforded up to three minutes for any comments, a total of 10 minutes for all public comment. And finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. So first item on the agenda is our chair's report. And I don't have a specific report tonight, so we will turn it to public comment for agenda items only in this public comment. So I see, Ms. Foyle?
Yes, thank you. So I'm Mary Foyle, 985 Flathead Row, Flat Hill Road. And I'm here actually as a teacher and took a more closer look at what I was going to say based on the calendar policy. And I realized something was on there that I wanted on there. And so I just want to speak real quick to that policy and the fact that there was a group of staff members, teachers, and school committee who used the IBB process to move through what those rules of the calendar would be. And it was, it's an excellent process that goes over how to problem solve and create consensus, not a winner takes all or the majority vote wins. And it was a process that I think really allowed us all to build dialogue and trust with each other. And I'm here today because in the past, in the last, years ago maybe, the breakout of the calendar, what was left out, and I thought it was left out on this draft, but I still see it here and I triple checked, the idea that a school week should consist at a minimum of two and a half, at least two and a half instructional days. And I thought that had been removed. I do see it on there and I hope that we do keep that on there. And it hasn't always been adhered to in the past few years. So I hope that when the committee is considering this policy, they keep it in there and that they also, you know, that it is adhered to when looking at future calendars. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going down the line looking for any other public comments regarding agenda items. I'm not seeing not seeing any hands up here as well. All right, then I will move on to our next item, which is to review and approve line item transfers. We have several tonight, which I'll turn it over to Dr. Burnham to go over those with us.
And actually, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Cassidy.
Good evening, everyone. This is Mike Cassidy, Business Manager. Before the committee this evening, our five separate budget transfers. I'll be happy to go through any questions you may have them, but I'll present them in a general sense. I would recommend that the committee, if it's the will of the committee, is to approve all transfers at once instead of one at a time, but that's the will of the committee. That's my recommendation, though. So we have five transfers. We have one central office transfer with a transfer of funds from our unemployment account to our IT contracted services account and meetings account. The second transfer is through our building and maintenance program. And it's an increase of funds to our building and maintenance supply account, which that increase was needed to purchase additional supplies and equipment for some of the work that was done at Turkey Hill Elementary School and the HVAC system there. And we underbudgeted one of the clothing maintenance allowance, $405, so we're transferring that. The money is coming from the emergency expenditure account as well as the maintenance and salary and wages account, which is both the salary and wages account will have a surplus this year. The next transfer in front of the school committee tonight is a small transfer of $55 in the middle school account to the workbook line item. And it's $55 coming from math supplies. It was the $55 will support math workbooks that were purchased. So we're just shifting that money in the appropriate account. The final two are pretty similar. There is a the middle school and the high school transferring funds from their music transportation account to their computer contractual computer contractual service account. The middle school is looking at a live streaming software support system for teachers. And the high school is looking at, they've surveyed some of the teachers and there's some online systems in support that the administration wants to provide to the teaching staff. So I will open up discussion for anyone, any school committee member that has a question on the transfer. And I will just say, there are a lot of transfers this week. I just want to alert you that at the next school committee, there will be the quarterly report that will be provided to the school committee. And this will clean up a lot of the negative balances that have been identified. So there might be a few negative balances with some stories behind them, and I'll certainly present those to the committee two weeks from tonight, but this will clear up that report nicely. So if you have any questions, please let me know.
I'm not seeing any questions from the members. If there are no questions, I will entertain a motion. Ms. Kelly?
I would like, oh, this is Laura Kelly. I would like to make a motion to approve all five line item transfers presented by Mr. Cassidy tonight.
And is there a second? Ms. Ashambo?
This is Carol Ashambo. I will second that.
And I think we're ready for roll call vote.
Ms. Shapiro?
Yes.
Ms. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Leighton?
Yes.
Ms. Ashambo?
Yes.
And Mrs. Bertrand?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone.
Excellent. Next, we will move on to reviewing and approving meeting minutes. So we had those from our November meetings. Did anyone, were there any? Is there anything anyone saw or brought up for change? All right, then if there were not any concerns or changes, I will take a motion to approve those minutes. Mr. Leighton?
This is Brian Leighton. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from November 4th to November 18th.
Is there a second? Ms. Shapiro?
Here, and I second that motion.
All right, roll call vote.
Ms. Shapiro?
Yes.
Ms. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Leighton?
Yes.
Ms. Ashambo?
Yes.
And Mrs. Bertrand?
Yes. Thank you, everybody. Superintendent's report.
All right. So I'll give you a little bit of an update on capacity for live streaming. The technology equipment that was ordered using CARES Act grant funds, both from the school and the town, those technology devices have been arriving and they are being distributed as they arrive. We are continuing conversations with teachers around the possibility of live streaming. We know that live streaming will allow students on extended quarantine periods access to instruction. So we're having some more conversation about that. On the November 24th PD day, the high school staff participated in a panel discussion on live streaming. Teachers from other districts that have been live streaming since September participated as panelists, providing their perspective and responding to questions from our teachers. We greatly appreciate the cooperation of the schools that provided this opportunity, releasing their teachers to have conversation with our teachers. I'm sure that all of our educators agree that we express our gratitude for our colleagues sharing some time with us. We do know that conversation continues around additional PD that might be needed. I can tell you that the eighth grade teachers at the middle school will begin a live streaming pilot next Tuesday. We look forward to hearing from them about their experience in live streaming. And additionally, I will be holding some meetings with staff, meeting one-on-one with each school to talk with teachers about their experience thus far, any challenges or concerns. They are having questions regarding the best way to allow all students to engage in instruction while they're not on campus. And we will also be hearing more about the feedback from staff, students, and families on our current learning model later this evening on the agenda. Chromebooks, very excited to tell you that the Chromebooks, the 329 Chromebooks that we ordered in June have arrived. They've actually arrived. And, you know, great, great kudos to our IT staff. You know, they've been taking them in and setting them up, and they're coordinating with the administration at the middle high school to distribute the devices that have come in. So we're very excited that we finally, finally have the long-awaited Chromebooks. Along this line, though, I have additional exciting news. The town received a donation and it's a very generous donation of $10,000 from one of our residents for the purpose of purchasing devices for students who don't have devices. Now we have enough devices for each student with these Chromebooks arriving. However, we did deploy every single device that we had. Some of them were in tough shape. So we will happily purchase some additional Chromebooks. And when those Chromebooks arrive, we will swap out for some of the devices that are not in great condition. So we will be able to purchase approximately 30 additional Chromebooks with that donation. And I want to extend thanks to the donor, Mr. Rich Latart. And we will certainly be sending a letter of gratitude along as well. The Holiday Lights Drive-Thru, I want to remind everybody that this year, although the tree is lit in the gazebo on the Lower Common, there was no annual tree lighting with festivities for all the residents to enjoy. However, the Holiday Lights Drive-Thru has been organized with other town departments. And I want to remind everybody that that's taking place at the middle high school on Saturday, December 12th, snow date on Sunday, December 13th. And you can find a flyer posted on the town website with more information. Our gift card drive is underway. As you know, our administrative assistants, this is the third year now that they've organized this gift card drive to support some of our families in need of a little bit of assistance this year. This year with COVID safety precautions, we're asking for all of the donations to be either emailed. E-gift cards can be emailed directly to Tina Cooney or they can be sent in with students to school. We're also hosting on Monday, December 7th, a drive-up drop-off between 10 and 12 at the middle high school. And we're accepting donations through December 8th, which is next Tuesday. That's all I have for you this evening.
That's a lot. It was all good stuff. Thank you. Student representatives' report. I'm just scrolling through. I don't think we've had a student rep join us. No?
No.
I didn't think so, but I didn't look to see if anyone popped on in the last handful of minutes. So we will skip that agenda item and move on to new business, our civics curriculum requirement.
So I would like to turn it over now to our History Department Head, Mr. Warren Stevenson. Warren, you should be able to share the screen, I believe.
I believe I will be able to. I'm so used to using Google Meets teaching. I'm an expert at that. That's a daily occurrence. I don't use Zoom very often. But I see the button on the bottom that says Share Screen, so I hope, I hope I'll be able to figure that out. So, so thank you. It's good to see a lot of faces I recognize here. And I'm going to make one quick comment. As we get to see into each other's homes with these Zoom meetings, I want to compliment Michael Cassidy on his framed Darkness and Edge of Town by Springsteen album. That's a man of good taste right there. That's my all-time favorite album. All right, so here's my, here's my presentation here. Let me see if I can figure this out. All right. And present. I apologize about that. All right, is this something everyone can see right now? All right, thank you. Fantastic. So what I'm here to do is to present the high school's plan for implementation of the new civics project that is now required by the state of Massachusetts by DESI for all of our students to take in order to graduate. So this was passed, it was signed into law by Governor Charlie Baker in 2018, and it needs to be implemented beginning this year. And the law requires that all students in eighth grade complete at least one civic, student-led civics project, and all students, and this is the part that I've highlighted here, and all students at least once in their high school, four years, nine through 12, that all students must complete at least one student-led, nonpartisan civics project. It's a requirement that every student's participating in this. So one of the things that DESI has made clear is that we can't just place this as an elective and say, "Well, you can take it if you want to, but if you don't, at least we gave you the choice." It actually has to be something that all students are going to take in order to truly fulfill this requirement in this law, signed in 2018. So what I wanted to do is to be able to give the school committee just a general overview as to the expectations of this civics project as outlined by DESI. And this actually comes directly from a document that DESI has provided on their website. It's the Civics Project Workbook. And the bold print is theirs and the highlights are, the highlights are mine. So one of the most important things about this student-led project is that it is student-led. And student choice, as you can see the bold print by DESI, student choice defines this experience. It says that there is no prescriptive learning experience. So what this cannot be, this cannot be the teacher beginning the class saying, "Okay, all 20 of us, we are going to do this. We're all going to join together. We're going to go to a community garden and we're all going to do this." That's not at all how this is supposed to be presented. This is where students themselves are going to be in charge of this task. In fact, you'll go to the bottom. It says, "This project can be completed at the individual, group, or class level and per the legislation." And it quotes. And one thing that I am finding is that the images of everybody is over the right side of my slide, so I can't see all the words. But anyways, I basically remember what it says. "But any student choosing not to participate in a particular group or class-wide project shall be offered the opportunity to develop an individual civics project with approval by the principal." So to be clear on how much is this student-led, you could theoretically have a class of 20 students in which 19 of them all agree to do one group civics project, and one student can say, "I don't want to," and they have every right to make that decision. And then that student would be able to develop his or her own student-led project. And if necessary, receive the principal's approval for that. It is a project-based assignment, and as DESI puts in bold print, "The goal is solving real-world problems or answering..." That's the part that's covered. But this is a project-based, but as it says down the bottom, how is project-based approach different from doing a project? It's that doing the project is often the summative task, whereas this, the unit itself, is the project. The students create their goal. Students create questions. The students create their project. So it's not so much that each teacher giving them the project. The students have to go out into the real world, into the community, and actually complete this project. In fact, it says right here on the next one, which is actually real world, as each would be segue into the other, "They want our students to push past hypothetical scenarios and theoretical action." And they want, and I think this line right here is one most important, "They want to teach students the power of their voices as constituents." And it says right here, "Even if they do not achieve 100% of their goal, what we really want," or both "we," Lunenburg, and DESI, because this is DESI language, "is that our students can see themselves as actually being able to make an impact on their community and their governments." I think for many human beings, many of us, the hardest thing is to do something for the first time. You know, it's always that hump with the unknown. And if we can get all of our students in grades 10 through 12 to at least once call a school committee member, call a Board of Selectmen member, call their state rep, call their state senator, go on to community and actually take action, then they are more likely to do that as adults. If they graduate all four years of high school never doing this, it's less likely they will then do this as adults. We're trying to give them that first opportunity to see themselves as actual voices, to see themselves as a voice that can actually make an impact. And another thing that makes this civics project particularly, I think, unique in many of the things we do in the high school is how much this has to be done out of school. It says right here in the middle that students must engage a relevant decision-maker. That decision-maker could be from a school committee member to a Board of Selectmen, to a state rep, to a state senator, theoretically to a US rep or US senator. It could be an interest group. But as it says down here, "Community stakeholders." Our students need to reach out beyond the walls of the classroom to truly fulfill this civics project as written in the law passed in 2018. One of the ultimate goals of this civics project is that it is rooted in a systems impact change. The students are meant to attempt to make a long-lasting change. So for example, and I think this is really going to, in perspective, how large this civics project is, what is not accepted? So the first example I'm going to give you is an example of what's called an isolated action. By being an isolated action, it means, it says it up here at the top, that the impact ends after completion. That's not what DESI wants our students working on. They want our students working on something that's going to be a long-term change. So for example, the example they give is extraordinarily admirable goal of our students. They raise money to invite a guest speaker to talk about the impact of, and I believe that says gun violence, I think, of gun trafficking, covered up with pictures. But that alone doesn't count as a civics project for two reasons. Number one, they haven't left the walls of the classroom, of the class. They've raised their money, but the presentation is in school and it's just a one-time thing. It's over. So down here, it shows what could our students do as part of this civic project. They could research an already existing bill in our state legislature, for example, Bill S1287, that has already been introduced but has not yet been passed. They could study that bill and they could begin to advocate for that bill. They could begin by doing their own research on why that bill would either be good or why that bill would be bad, because we can't tell the students what position they have. And the student could then lobby, and they could then call their state legislature or the state senator and talk to them about why, not just to call them and say, "I want you to pass this," but to give a well-bought-out presentation as to why this bill should pass, because if this bill passes, that would be systemic impact. Another thing our students could do would be to develop programs that have police officers reach out to youth as a constant thing, not a one-time thing. Or our students could organize a gun buyback program in the city. And now remember, this is going to be done in every town and every city in Massachusetts. So there are certainly communities in which gun buyback might be a very, very big deal, depending on where you live. And this is something that students could become involved in. Goal-driven, in a way I've already talked about this, down here in bold print, it says, "Students should see themselves as powerful agents of change." And then up here, they actually specifically list, "What could our students do?" Now, one of the, one of the main goals of this project is to either change public or influence public opinion or influence an actual policy. So some examples of how do you influence policy would be changing the school curriculum. You know, our students are the ones being taught, and yet very rarely do they get to set the school curriculum. Well, they could do research and try to present to you as a school committee why they believe our school curriculum could change. They could advocate for reallocation of community resources. They could advocate for adding a youth voting member to the school committee. And this is the words of DESI. This is not Ivan with the center here. These are the types of thing that DESI is saying that these students could make an impact with this. And these are the types of proposals they could theoretically work on. Inquiry-based, this has to be research-based. So this is not outside of something we're already teaching them in high school. We want them to build the most skills. And, but then also, I want to continuously point out how much they want kids out of the classroom doing this. Not only should they be researching on, for example, databases, but it says right here, "What about individuals within the community?" By conducting surveys and interviews, they want to be calling school committee members. They want to be calling school committee members, boards of selectmen, the principal, and so forth to to be able to, you know, achieve this systems level. The project itself is supposed to be nonpartisan. And so this is going to be one of the more important things that comes up for whoever, you know, right now, we have a plan for who's teaching it. But you know, if this lasts for 10, 20, 30 years for the many people that may be teaching this. For the educators who are 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 facilitating the civics project, one thing that has to be understood is this is supposed to be a nonpartisan project. So the educators themselves should facilitate conversations where all voices are heard, respect the multiple opinions. And one of the most important things that the educator can do is to make sure sources are are legitimate. Help students understand what what sources should you be using. Is there is there too much bias of this sort? Not to say the student, this is you're wrong in your view, conservative, liberal, Democrat, Republican, but to say, let's look at our legitimate sources. Now, students, what should students not be doing? Well, right here it says, student led civics projects should not be directed at electoral politics, nor should they be developed in support of candidates. I think this will be particularly relevant every two years when we have our midterm or our presidential election. Part of this civics project is not for our students to go and start campaigning for a candidate. Now, that's great if they do. I've taught government for years and years, and I am proud of every student who has ever joined. And in fact, a previous student sitting right here on our school committee. And and you know, any student who either gets actively involved in politics or or works on a campaign. But working on a campaign itself does not fulfill the systems change, systems level change that this civics project is asking for. What a student could do is they can advocate for ballot propositions. For example, question two of the past election was ranked choice voting, that didn't pass. But had it passed, that would have been a systems level change. It would have changed the way we conduct our election. And students could advocate for ballot propositions as part of this civics project. Student projects may involve student led lobbying, and so they may go and lobby a Democratic politician, a Republican politician. There's nothing wrong with that. They may choose a bill that leans left or right. There's nothing wrong with that. So and I think the student themselves certainly has more leeway in being partisan than, of course, the teacher does in terms of setting the structure of the course. Process focused. This is also important, I think, for us to remind our students, they may not achieve that systems level change. I mean, let's remind ourselves, this is going to be done every year by every student in every city and every town in Massachusetts. To believe that every everything is going to be achieved. I mean, they may present to you, the school committee, and you, the school committee, may say, no. So it's not so much that the student successfully achieves their goal, but that they went through the process, that they now know how to voice themselves as constituents and how to enter and engage in this in this political process. And there are six stages of civics engagement that that DESI has put out that they want whoever teaches this using the six stages. Now, I think this is pretty much a summary of pretty much everything I just I just went over. This is directly from the DESI Civics Project Guidebook. And what it does is it tries to show you the difference between what is a community service project, which is not meeting the standard of this project, and what is a civic project, which is meeting the standard of the civics project. Right, I think, because when I I first went to these trainings a year ago, I I attended multiple DESI trainings on how to implement this project, this civics project, and even I was a bit taken aback by, wow, they 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 expect a lot out of this, because if you looked at what they say doesn't count, is actually quite engaged. So what does not count? Students organize a schoolwide food drive. They even got other groups in the community to participate. They were able to collect over 2,000 cans to donate to the local homeless shelter, which was more than the shelter had ever received through a single drive, but that still doesn't count as a civics project because it doesn't have a more permanent system level change. So what would? Students research their biology class, how chronic hunger affects the body and its effects on young people in particular. Students advocate to the city and school district for resources and then implement a school food pantry that will last year after year by partnering with the Merrimack Food Bank. That would count as a civic project. Yet again, if they attempt and they don't successfully implement it, but they went through the process, that would count. Finally, on the bottom here, what doesn't count? Students develop a concern for the cost of college and lack of access for many of their peers due to such costs. They held a fundraiser to pay for a fellow student's college fees. Remarkable activity should be done, but doesn't count as part of the civics project. What could be done after engaging in a unit in math class on the cost of college, financial aid formulas and loan interest, students decided to tackle the issue of college affordability. They joined organizations around the state to advocate for a current bill being debated by the state legislature. All right, so that is the summary of what DESI expects us at the high school to implement. That's a big task. We're not asking, this is not a one day thing. This is this is a a significant project. So after going through the trainings last year and and, you know, fairly extensive meetings with Rob McGrath and Amy Scott and others that involved in this in this process, including Mary Foyle, we came up with this proposed implementation, which is what we are asking school committee to to. So the way we hope to implement this new project is we we have already created a new half year elect titled Civic and Community Engagement. This course is currently running for the first time this year. It is a half year course, thus it will be running twice, first semester and second semester, and it is currently running and being taught by Mary Foyle. And any ELA teacher, and I can speak to why, any ELA teacher is teaching in just a moment. The Civic and Community Engagement Course is open to all sophomores, juniors, and seniors. I think that's important because they're going to have a choice as to when they fulfill this. It's it's going to give them a little more flexibility in fitting it into their schedule by not saying it has to be senior year, it has to be junior year. They can choose within three years to take this half year course. This course will count as a general elective credit, a 0.5 credit within the already required 24 credits graduate from Lunenburg High School. Students are going to be given two ways to fulfill this requirement. They're going to have to take either the new Civic and Community Engagement Half Year Course, or they can enroll in the full year English for Community Service Learning Course. This is probably a good time to talk about why is this, how are we linking this to ELA? We are very lucky at Lunenburg that we actually had an educator who who somewhat foresaw this law well before this law was ever passed. Mary Foyle has advocated for for many, many years to get our students more and more engaged in our community and more and more actively civically engaged. And Mary, many years ago, proposed the creation of an English Community Service Learning Course in which one of their goals for the year would be to implement community service learning projects. Now, Mary, as soon as she heard about this new law, asked both me and Rob McGrath if she could also attend the DESI trainings, and she did, attended all of them, at least with a blank eye. And and Mary, I remember saying to me, she's like, this is like, I pretty much do all of this already. And, you know, other than making sure that the the community service projects have a civics systems impact and use the six stages of of civics implementation that DESI is requiring, which is something that Mary will be incorporating to the Civic and Community Engagement Course and in her English for CSL course, she didn't need to radically change that English for CSL course. So what's nice is we already have a full year course that students could take in which they would then not need to add anything to their schedule, because they already need to take four years of English. And so if a student takes that senior year English for CSL, they not only achieve a fourth year of English, but they also achieve that civic project. But if a student has other plans, they don't want to take an honors level, or maybe they want to take AP Lit, and they don't want to take the English for CSL. They can take the Civic and Community Engagement Course, which is only a half year course, and thus can be fit into their schedule in any of their sophomore, junior, senior year, and theoretically, they could take both of these courses, not at the same time, but in different years. If you have a highly, highly engaged student who says, I want to spend the rest of my life being a politician, maybe sophomore year they'll take Civic and Community Engagement, a senior year they'll take the English for CSL. The only thing we don't want them doing is taking it at the same time, because essentially they'd be working on graduate at the same time. And what we are proposing is that this is a graduation requirement for beginning with the class of 2023. That would be our current sophomore class. They were informed of this last year, and the Civic and Community Engagement Course is running already this year. So some of them have already been able to begin achieving this graduation goal. So fitting this into our program of studies on the left hand side is already in our program of studies. These are the already required graduation requirements that our students must meet. That totals 19 credits out of the 20, students must have 24 credits to graduate from high school, 19 of which are already prescribed. What we are asking for approval of is that we include the language down here, that students must take either Civic and Community Engagement as a 0.5 credit or take the English for CSL in order to achieve, in order to in order to graduate, because the state of Massachusetts is requiring that all our students finish, excuse me, that all students take a course in which they're able to complete this civics project. To, as I enter my final slides here, we are very excited to offer this course and honestly to implement this project. I have long wanted our students to be more involved. I I was it 14 years ago now, I created the World Hunger Task Force. And and many, many of my students have gone out to do work with our Lunenburg Lions Club with the help of the food drive. And we've we've done fundraisers, and that was my way of getting our kids more civically engaged. I've already told you how Mary has worked to get our kids more civically engaged. This is now going to allow all our students to become more civically engaged, not just as an extracurricular, but all of them. And it fulfills a NIASC requirement. From our 2020 NIASC accreditation report, NIASC focused on on which priority areas do we need to focus on? And priority area number three stated, the school culture fosters civic engagement and social and personal responsibility. And NIASC then wrote, they basically, you know, NIASC always challenges, that's right, they they challenge the school, and this is a challenge. The purpose of the priority area is to create a more consistent and widespread program to foster student opportunities to exercise social responsibility and make an impact on the larger community. That is what NIASC wants us to do. That is the language quoted from the NIASC report. And then at the bottom of that, NIASC gave us three steps that they would like us to incorporate over the next 10 years before our next accreditation. Incorporate formal experiences that foster civic engagement and social and personal responsibility in our students. Number two, they want us to implement the new Civic and Community Engagement Course. How do they know about that? Because they interviewed me last year as part of the as part of the process. And now they are asking that we actually implement it. What will be nice is if the school committee approves, we do implement this, we will then meet number one. Because if we can implement the Civic and Community Engagement Course and all our students must take that or the English for CSL, then all our students will be more civically engaged, and because these are student led projects, we'll have that social and personal responsibility as part of those projects. Another thing that I think is interesting is NIASC also writes this on the bottom, that they want our school to incorporate further the democratic values of agency, the idea of going out and being active, civil dialogue, adjusting thinking, and in the, and once again, I can't see the side, information equality and a commitment to the common good to conform the curriculum. I think I would love to see this become, if you notice the samples DESI gave, one was a biology class, one was a math class. It would be nice to see this civic engagement incorporated in all our classes. Science focusing on climate change and what students can do with that and so forth. This doesn't have to be a social studies thing and shouldn't be just a social studies thing. And I think that that language from NIASC really looks at this as really incorporating it to parts of our school. And finally, this course goes beyond just going out and doing a civics project. This course is going to, because they have to go out and meet adults in the community, they need to practice their interview skills. If they're going to meet with a school committee member, they need to know, how do you conduct an appropriate interview? And that will help them when they're interviewed and for jobs. That'll help them as they as they leave our school and have real world application. How are they going to develop their questions? Getting students to develop appropriate questions, how to address and speak appropriately to a particular audience. And of course, they need to do significant research. This will further develop the research. Finally, the Department of Ed is going to make sure we're actually implementing this. It says here in the May of 2019, the department communicated the expectation that all our education agencies would begin implementation of the History and Social Science Framework and Student Led Non-Civics Project beginning in the 2019-2020 school year. That's a bit misleading, that line. The the actual frameworks needed to be implemented last year, 2019-2020, and we have done that. They want us to fully implement the framework and civics project this year, 2020-2021. So the frameworks were supposed to be implemented 2019-2020, and the civics project 2020-2021 in this current school year. They are going to be collecting SIMS data, if you look on the bottom, to make sure that our school is actually implementing this project, because it is now a requirement for all students. All right, sorry that that was so long. I'm going to stop sharing now and and turn it over. I don't know how to handle this to any questions. I'd be glad to answer anything. We also have Amy Scott here, who's our Director of Curriculum.
I'll take it back. Thank you, Mr. Stevenson. That was a really thorough, really clear, because it it gave us a global picture of what's happening, but also the details, because, you know, our our students and families, you know, are, you know, moving forward are going to want to know not only what students will be doing, how they'll execute it, and timelines. Everything was really clear around the graduation requirements. So I I will turn it over if any school committee members have any any questions or comments. Mr. Leighton?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Stevenson. I appreciate the in-depth presentation. I also want to thank Mrs. Foil as well for staying ahead of the game and doing the research as well to to get this incorporated early on. My question was in regards to the the grading. It's kind of a new course, a little different than a typical course. How are the the students graded? How is, is there a rubric presented to them in that elective? And then also in the English course, too. I'm assuming that's maybe it's a certain percentage of their grade. I don't know if you could expand on that at all?
Would it be appropriate for me to turn this over to Mary right now? Is that okay? Or what? She's here.
I would be very comfortable doing that because she's kind of doing it right now.
How lucky, Warren, that I was here. So no, those are good questions, and this would be a much scarier experience if I hadn't been teaching this project for about five years. So I feel very comfortable with it, though with that saying civics, I'm still feeling my way out about that a little bit. So I'll use the English first as an example. So the really great thing about a lot of this work is that English students would be doing it anyways. For example, my CSL English students right now are in what we would be doing as the research process for writing a research paper. It's a senior requirement. They're doing for me a literature review, and so they're actually delving into the issue. They're going through databases. We've talked about using scholarly article. We've talked about foundation pieces. We spent a lot of time in the first quarter talking about community. Mr. McGrath and Dr. Burnham actually joined our class in there for talking about the community. We spent a lot of time, and I'm still trying to hammer this in with them, on root causes, so that we are actually going after the system, the structure of the system, not the, you know, consequences of. So I do grade their research paper like I would in any senior English class. They actually write an additional paper for me, a methodology, which is very collegiate. So I think it gives a good experience to students for that. It's also something that would be done in the workforce. I grade, I grade their process. I never grade their product as far as the project goes. Like, yes, I'm grading the project of the product of the research paper, but their actual product, their project doesn't get a grade. The components that built into that get a grade. In the spring with CSL, and I'll probably do this with civics, I didn't, because I'm trying to balance it, civics is an elective. It doesn't have quite the same, you know, it doesn't have to have quite the same weight as another course, but we will work in elevator pitches. That's a graded assignment. They do a presentation on their project. That's a graded assignment. But their project itself doesn't get a grade. It's the work of the project that ends up getting a grade. First civics right now, it's been, and it's weird being in the pandemic, because it's really limited some of the work that we can do. So it's a frustrating first year, because I feel like I'm not getting quite the feel from it that I I want to be getting. But second semester will be better. That's great about a second, doing a semester course. So right now, they're actually more in the throes of putting their project together. And they have, as far as that civic mindedness goes, usually, my CSL class, it was my plan for the civics, except we hit the pandemic. You know, attending some sort of town meeting is one of their graded assignments. So in the past, like Ms. Bertrand has seen, my students show up for school committee meetings in the past. So building in those civic elements, it's those little components that get graded along the way. It's not a big project grade that they get. It's really the experience that we're after. I actually love it. I mean, I feel for them, but I love it. They always run into lots of red tape, some projects more than others. And you don't get gleeful about it, but it's a learning experience. And so we talk a lot about how do you, what's adaptability, how do you change? And yes, we spend a lot of times on the idea that you've got this big idea in your head. That might not end up being what happens, and that's really how life works. So it's really a lot of focus on the process.
Thank you. I actually had a question regarding the proposal would be graduation requirement beginning with the class of 2023. What for the two classes before that, between now and then 2021, 2022? What? What would they, how would they participate?
So essentially, they theoretically can, because they could sign up for the Civic and Community Engagement Course or the English for CSL, but it will be a choice for them. That is actually, that's actually okay under the way the law is currently written. And so to give you an example of how many schools are implementing this. And so to give you an example of how many schools are implementing this. Two years ago, I came to school committee asking for a fairly radical change of our social security. We used to have three year-long required courses, a World Freshman Course, a US One Sophomore Year Course, and a US Two Junior Year Course. I asked that we turn the US course into a survey course of a broad overview of US history for sophomore year and then create half-year electives that we're able to focus on more focused history. I will say, we have been implementing that and I think it's going over pretty well. We've been able to create numerous courses, Nuclear Agent America, Early America, the Medieval Age for a World History Course, and Civil Rights of America, a course that I thought was particularly relevant with all that's going on. And our students now have more choices of history. But I bring that up for a reason. Most schools did not go that route. Most schools currently still have two full US year courses. And most schools are implementing this project within their US Two Junior Year Course. They're going to take, you know, whether it be a full quarter or whether it be eight weeks or six weeks to do this, they're going to put it into their current US Two. We no longer have a junior year US Two. So that's why we're trying to find an alternative method. But let me go back to those other schools. If they're implementing it during their junior US Two, then their seniors aren't getting it. So that's my way of answering that question is that the way the law is written, we have to find at least one chance for all our students to meet it, but we get to decide which year it starts with. And so we're not saying the classes of 21 and 22 can't do this because they can choose, but we are saying they can choose to do it. It won't be a requirement until the class of 21.
Thank you. And any other questions from the committee? All right, then I will enter to, oh, Ms. Shapiro.
Sorry about that. First of all, thank you for that wonderful presentation. That was so thorough. And I am, I love this idea. I think it's fantastic. I just had a super quick question. So I know the CSL, you get English credit for that. Would you also get a Unified Art credit for the elective class? Or would that just fulfill the civics requirement?
That's a fantastic question. And that is something that Mr. McGrath, Ms. Scott, and I literally just met on. And you are correct that the English for CSL is obviously a full-year ELA credit. The civic and community engagement course will be a general credit. It will not be a Unified Art credit. I think that's actually important because we don't want to eat into our Unified Arts program. Getting our students to be well-rounded and having many, many opportunities and to be able to take those visual arts and those musical arts is as important as all our other courses. So we didn't want to say, you know, here's another chance to fulfill Unified Arts and then a kid skips out on some of that. No, we're making it a general elective so that within those, we already showed you how they have a 19 required, but you also have those five extra for 24. It'll be within those five extra. It'll be a general elective, not linked to any one department, which also allows multiple teachers to teach it. I mean, maybe someday I'll be teaching it, you know. And, you know, right now, Ms. Foyle, so either way, you know, it's a general elective. And that's a great question because we literally just made that decision about a week ago.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you.
Could I just say I'd like to thank Mr. Stevenson for all the work he has done on this as well as Ms. Foyle. But the amount of work he has done and the amount of meetings he has gone to, I can't thank him enough because as thorough of a presentation he has done tonight, he's done about four of those for me already as we've gone through this. So he's just done a phenomenal job and I just wanted to say thank you.
All right. Then I will take a motion from the committee. What the committee is considering tonight, just for clarity for the committee, is approving this civics curriculum requirement beginning with the graduating class of 2023. So that would be what is on the table for us to approve. Ms. Ashambo?
I would make a motion to approve the civics curriculum requirement as presented by Mr. Stevenson this evening for the class of 2023.
Is there a second? Ms. Shapiro?
Sophie Shapiro, and I second that motion.
All right, then. Actually, Mr. Cassidy is going to do our roll call vote because Dr. Burnham is having technical difficulties. He is aware of that. So he will roll call vote for us.
Ms. Bertrand?
Yes.
Ms. Ashambo?
Yes.
Ms. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Leighton?
Yes.
Ms. Shapiro?
Yes.
Five years, zero eight days. Motion passes.
Excellent. Thank you for your time and your thorough presentation. The last thing I'll say about that is, is when considering curriculum changes, having this much clarity makes it simpler for us to, as a school committee, to examine, to determine if this is, you know, if it's the best course of action. So I appreciate, you know, the clarity in the presentation.
Thank you.
Okay. It looks like Dr. Burnham may now be back as host. I saw Town of Lunenburg pop back in. So, oh, Town of Lunenburg is out now. We may have to, the reason I say this is, we may have to hop off this meeting. Wait. We may have to hop off this meeting. So she's back. You're muted, Carol.
I'm all set now.
You're now all set. Okay, good. Good, good, good. All right, then we will move on to our winter season update. Mr. Vonnell?
How's it going? Good, how are you? I guess happy belated Thanksgiving to the school committee members. I hope you guys all enjoyed that little holiday break. So I am here to talk to you guys about winter sports, give you a little brief recap of fall sports. And, yeah. So I think all of you got what I had provided to Dr. Burnham. As you all know, I graciously came to you, it seems like forever ago now, asking you to approve to let us go forward with fall sports. You did so. And I think here at Lunenburg, it was very successful. As you can see, the number of participants that played in practices and competitions and then on top of, you know, the 10 football practices, modified football practices that we were allowed. We had, you know, over 200 kids participating and stuff. I could tell you that when I saw the kids in the hallways, even though they had a mask on, you saw they had a little pep in their step. You know, having something to do and being able to interact with their peers socially, emotionally, I think benefited all those who did participate in athletics in the fall. So I come back to you today, as I promised, regarding winter athletics. I put together basically kind of like an overview and I tried to hit all the main points regarding winter athletics. I sent Dr. Burnham today what the, similar to what the districts two and three put together for the fall regarding guidelines and protocols. Mr. McGrath was just letting me know that the principals were voting on that tonight as the guidebook for winter athletics. So you guys will have that. And once the principals approve that, that'll get posted and sent out just as I did with fall sports. So I would like you to consider, again, allowing sports to happen in the wintertime, modified versions of certain sports, both the MIAA, districts two and three. Our league and our pod have all come out with modifications to as safe as we possibly can allow for student athletes to have the opportunity to participate in some type of athletic activity during the winter season. The sports that I come to you requesting, hopefully giving your blessing to allow to happen would be JV Boys and Girls Basketball, varsity and JV Boys Ice Hockey. Our girls, well, the few couple girls that we have that participate in girls' ice hockey and the students that we have participating in Alpine Ski. But there's a little caveat to that. We got to find a place for them or else we might not have Alpine Ski this year. So I went over, if you want me to go into further detail of what I provided for you, I'll be more than happy to. I don't want to, you know, keep repeating everything that I wrote down unless you prefer me to. But I'll answer any questions that you may have regarding this. Yeah.
One quick question. If you could just outline really briefly for each sport, what the modifications look like? Just because not everyone, just not everyone has this in front of them.
Yeah, not a problem at all. So the modifications to basketball, the sport-specific modifications. So originally, when the EEA, the state EEA released their guidelines, basketball was considered a high-risk sport and was not allowed to participate in competition. At the beginning of November, those modifications changed, which opened the door for basketball to participate in competition with modifications to the sport. Similar to like some of the modifications that we encountered in the fall, like with soccer and field hockey. Basketball, the modifications that were made, there is no more tip-off to start the game. It's actually a coin toss. And then whoever wins the coin toss, they just inbound the ball from half court. Other modifications to the game, the person, if a person chooses to defend the ball, the person inbounding the ball, they have to maintain six feet apart. They can't be right up against that inbounding line. There are no more inbounding the basketball from underneath the basket. If the ball were to go out of bounds, that ball now gets brought to the foul line extended on the side of the court to inbound the ball there so that there's not all that congestion and dead time when inbounding the ball from under the hoop. During free throws, there's no one allowed in on the first foul shot aside from the person shooting the ball. The second person, the second free throw, there are a limited number of people that are able to go up for the rebound. Similar to, there's no more halftime. Basically, there's a two-minute and 30-second, I guess you would say, brief intermission in between each quarter where student athletes are able to get, you know, take a mask break if they need it, get more water. But it's more of a briefing. The biggest thing with all the athletics is the goal is to get there to the facility, warm up, play, and then go. So as much as they could reduce that lag time or standing around, that was the goal behind eliminating all that. There will be socially-distanced benches, just like there was in the fall. I'm going to have some type of system of labeling and spacing everybody out. Like the fall, masks are worn at all times, practices, games, by officials, coaches, players, they have to be on. If they're not, if it falls down, if it breaks, that's a different story. But if it gets pulled down, the official will be sending the athlete off the court. What else do I got? The students have to bring their own water bottle. They have to come to the facility for both practices and games, basically dressed to play. So there's no, locker rooms can't be open. That's still under the state guidance. So they'd be coming in one entrance. They can, I have more detailed, specific stuff related to Lunenburg about how early they can arrive, what they do when they arrive, to try to limit, you know, that people bumping into each other that don't need to bump into each other. There are no, per districts two and three, there are no spectators going to be allowed inside. So basically, when we have a game, that game is our team, the visiting team, the officials, the coaches, the two people that I have running the scoreboard, the game management staff, and that's pretty much it. But because there's no fans, I've been working with our awesome technology department. We tried to get live streaming done in the fall and I was unsuccessful at that. However, I reached out to the local public access and this afternoon, we, Steve, myself, and Joe were in the gymnasium and we will be able to livestream the varsity games in the gym. If she can't do both or find somebody to both, she's going to train me on how to use this fancy high-tech equipment so that I can add another hat that I wear. So I'll be a TV technician for Public Access of Lunenburg for some games. So I can add that to my, you know, check that box off. So, you know, I know how important it is for parents to see their student athletes play, but I also know how important it is that parents just want to see their kids have the opportunity to play. So, you know, and when it was voted on, no fans, that's out of the health and safety aspect, another layer that we could add. So I'm trying to figure out everything I possibly can to allow them to see them in some way, shape, or form. So that's what I got going on for basketball. Ice hockey, modifications there. A lot of the modifications came via the rink before even the MIA modifications had to come into play. We know that ice hockey had been under a little bit of a microscope. And I think the Civic Center and FMC, or the company that runs the Civic Center and the Gardner Veteran Center, the two rinks that we'd be using, I think have done a very good job of implementing protocols to adhere and then some to the safety and wellbeing of the athletes and the people that would be participating in a contest. They have extended the bench area. So no longer is it just the confined area. Basically, they have eliminated a wall and that bench area goes pretty much the entire length of half the ice so that the ice hockey players will be socially distanced when they're not on the surface itself. There are no locker rooms again. The student athletes, just like coming to play in a gymnasium, would be coming to, have to come to practices or games at the rink, basically prepared to play. They would be allowed to put their skates on inside, but should come with their pads, you know, jersey, like all that stuff, ready to go. And then there's certain entrances at the Civic Center that one team will be allowed to come in one way, the other team will be coming in from the other entrance. And then they both have exits after the game is finished where when the Zamboni's going, they'll be exiting while the next team would be coming in. In addition, there's a couple modifications to the gameplay. Usually, if the puck stalls or gets hung up against the boards and somebody's skating, there's two players going at it. Usually, the officials will let them try to fish it out for a little bit. Basically, if that can't happen within like five seconds, they're blowing the whistle to get them away from each other. The same thing that if another person, if there's two players there and someone from either team were to come and try to join in to try to help get that puck out, it's an automatic whistle and play stops and they bring it out of that area. They've also limited roster size in ice hockey to just 20 players. So they've reduced that by two. Basketball, really never had a roster size limit, but the league or the districts two and three, we've limited the roster size for basketball to 12. Just to, again, try to limit the number of people that would be inside in the gym. Again, the same with basketball. Ice hockey would not be having fans. The FMC arenas are the two that we'd be using. They have a service called Live Barn, which they are able to livestream the games. And it is active in the Civic Center and Um, and it is active in, in the Civic Center and at the Veterans Arena, um, that is a subscription service, a lot of hockey people that. Um, are already playing do, um, subscribe to that, um. I, I, I know Coach Short is here too, so I don't, I'm not quite sure on the fee, but, um. I don't think it's, it's overly expensive and, and where normally. Parents and, and people are coming to watch the games would pay to enter the game, y- you could just kind of figure that. Coach, are you there?
Yeah, it's, um, it's, it's between sixteen and twenty dollars a month, um, but they could. You know, they could, they could just get this, you can turn the service on and off, so they could. Um, they could just start the subscription for the, for the two months and, and, and do that. Um, and then shut it off, but most, most of the kids, most of the families have it anyway.
Thanks, Coach, I appreciate it.
Yep.
Um. So again, that's, a- and like I said too, where normally parents would be coming to the game to, and, and purchasing a ticket to enter. Instead of, they're not gonna be having to do that this year, so they could just flip it to. Purchasing that service, um. And the last, uh, that we have is Alpine Ski. Um, Alpine Ski is, is considered a, a very low risk, um, sport, um, because you're, you're skiing. Um, and you're on the mountain outside, um. Personally, I'm not a skier, so I, 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 the sport I think is great itself for those that love it, but, um, for someone who's not a fan of snow, um. Not my cup of tea, but, um, they, they're basically, um, socially distanced guidelines, um, like any other sport, um, that, that we have. Um. Limited number of people are able to participate, which we i- in the years that I've been here, our ski team hasn't even reached that number of twenty-five. Um. And there's a. Certain amount of practice time that you're allowed, um, there's staggered spacing, all, all, you, you, um, come prepared to the, the ski resort. Um, when you're done, you check off, um. You know, you're doing everything spaced out and which Alpine Ski is basically that anyways, when you're racing, um, it's one person going down the hill at a time. Um. Yeah. Whew, I need a drink of water. Um, but those are the, those are the, the modifications specifically to the sports, um. Like the fall, um, I. Plan on doing everything that I possibly can to make our facility, um. As, as safe as I possibly can make it, providing plenty of hand sanitizing stations, um, I, I'm gonna, I met with, um. Katie McGuire, um, the other day and we went over, um, just. I told her how, what I was thinking of my plan of how things I thought were gonna work. Um, and she provided her input a- and, and we took away like, you know, the pros and cons of, of things in the fall, um, where. You know, I know what I do here in Lunenburg and, and I follow those rules to a T a- and then some, um. What I could do in my power is keep my kids safe and my coaches safe while they're in Lunenburg, and when they go off. I, I hope that the other schools do follow the same protocols that have been set up, but I, I prepare them when they're not, um. Each team, like the fall, will have their COVID crate, um, that they can take with them, which has the mask, the sanitizer, um. Gloves. Um, spray, uh, towels to wipe stuff down, um. You, just so if a, if a, if a, if a facility does not have those things, our kids still have it. Um, or have access to it, um, transportation would work similar to it, to the fall, um, where. The JV team would go, um. To the site. And then another bus would come and take the varsity team, so they would not be interacting the same thing with practices. Each team would have practices staggered so that. No one is really. Intermingling with the other teams, um. Another added layer that we tried to do for basketball in our pod, um. Games are right now going to be Tuesdays and Fridays, um. They're scheduled for like four and six PM, so that there's a space in between to, um, sanitize the bench area before the next team comes in. Um, there's no announcements at games, um. There, we won't be doing, um. The National Anthem, it's basically you get there, you're gonna warm up, you're gonna play. And the next team's gonna come in after. All, um, the sanitizing happens, the same with the officials, the officials have been notified to not show up. No more than twenty minutes before the game, um, and they need to come ready as. Well, uh, oh. There's no locker room area for them either, um. The, I lost my thought, um. Oh, so with the schedule, um, with basketball, uh, um, at least, uh, because. We, we as athletic directors in schools can control that a little more because of our facilities, um. The, our pod that we're in, um, it's similar to the pod that we're in, in the fall, um, which for the most part. The majority of the teams we already played or, or were going to play this season before everything happened, um. So for example, Littleton. Let's say we play them the first week of the season, um, the boys are home on Tuesday, the girls are away on Tuesday. On Friday, we would play Littleton again. With the boys being opposite and the girls being opposite of where they were on Tuesday, so we thought that. As, as athletic directors, that if anything were to happen, um, between the schools, that. You're not bringing another school in and it would just affect. Ho- hopefully, you know, a specific team or. It wouldn't ruin everything else that, that's going on if something were to happen, um. Yeah, I think that's all I got. Unless you want me to do more, I, I can, I can come up with some other stuff, I'm, I'm sure.
One other, one other question, uh, fees, are fees remaining the same in spite of a shortened season?
Yeah, so similar to what, um, what was done in the fall, the. Even though the, the number of games have been reduced, the number of transportation has. I, I have to, basically, it's doubled. So where before, just like with soccer and field hockey, I was able to send. Both teams on one bus, um. Now I'm sending each team on their own bus, um. And with no fans, uh, at any of the places, that, that parent transportation piece for basketball makes it a little hard. Um. Hockey and ski, they're, they're more used to. Transporting themselves anyways to, to the Civic Center for practices and games, so that's really not a new. A new thing for them and we never provided busing to the Civic Center for ice hockey, um. So that's nothing. Out of the ordinary, it's. It, it, yes, they're getting, well, every, everybody's getting ten games, um, which is the same as the fall. Um, the varsity teams, you know, if you wanna call it a championship or a playoff system, it's just a different way to, to. To play an opponent as opposed to just scheduling it in right off the start, um. But the varsity team can have an opportunity to play up to. Additional two games if they, depending on how they, they do. Um, but that gives everybody two games a week and, and things like that, um, to kind of. To keep it consistent as we'd had in the fall.
Any questions from the committee? Alright, then I will enter, Ms. Shapiro.
Um, thank you. First of all, thank you for the thorough presentation, that was really helpful, um. So obviously an added risk with winter sports that we didn't have with fall sports is that we will be inviting students from other districts into our school buildings. And so just to kind of combat that risk, um, I was wondering if there would be consistent. Like oversight during practices and games to ensure that, um, students are following. The set guidelines and if there would be any kind of repercussions for students that are consistently non-compliant.
For our own students or for other schools?
Um, I, I think probably mostly for our students because we don't have control over the other students, but.
So our, I, I, the fall, in the fall, um. And I mentioned it several times to Mr. McGrath a- and Dr. Burnham and even, um, Mrs. Bertrand when we, when we bumped into each other. The student athletes, um, they really wanna play. And they, they followed the guidelines. If they were told they needed to wear a mask all the time, they were wearing that mask all the time, if they had it down. It, it wasn't intentional, it was more of a, oh, whoops, I, and they put it, they took care of it right away. Um, I, I don't envision. These, these kids not following the rules. Because they know that if they don't, it's gonna get taken away, or they're not gonna be allowed to participate. Um, and if, I, I, I feel like it's gonna be. Like the athletes that I had in the fall, and there's gonna be a lot less of them too. I mean, we're talking at most. In total forty-eight people playing basketball and twelve people at a time. So. It's not like the hundred and fifty I had i- in, in fall all over the place, um, i- they're basically coming in one entrance, going into the gym. Doing their check-in, practicing, having their breaks, their practice is done, they're leaving out a door. The next people are coming in and. And that's it, so there's no. I, I tried to limit the opportunity for them to. Have slip-ups because it's, you're, you're showing up, you're. Participating in your sport and you gotta go. That, i- i- there's really. You know, you can't dilly-dally and, and take some extra free throws after practice or anything like that, or show up early to, to, it's, you get there, you do what you gotta do. And we're getting out because that's what we have to do right now.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? If not, I will entertain a motion, um, we are. Voting to whether or not to a, approve. Winter sports season and, and sports as outlined. Ms. Ashambo.
Uh, this is Carol Ashambo and I will make a motion to approve the winter sports season as outlined. By the athletic director.
Is there a second? Mr. Leighton?
Brian Leighton, I second the motion.
Roll call vote.
Ms. Shapiro? I'm gonna abstain from this vote. Ms. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Leighton?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashambo?
Yes.
And Mrs. Bertrand?
Yes.
Thank you guys, I, I know you're, you're gonna have a lot of happy student athletes in the building tomorrow. Or probably right now, if they're watching.
When will we, when will there be an update on ski?
Um, that I'm still working on, uh, it's, it's a matter of the mountains getting back to us and letting us know. Um, but I hope to have information sooner rather than later, as soon as I'm done presenting here, I'm actually going on. My fourth Zoom meeting in a row, this one will be with ski, so. Uh, I hope to have more information by tomorrow, um, but I will keep, uh, uh, I'll obviously keep all of you i- in the loop and, and I'll let Mr. McGrath and, and. Dr. Burnham know as soon as I know, um, with all the ongoings of, of this winter season.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you guys very much, I appreciate it.
Alright, then we will move on to our next. Uh, item on the agenda, which is, uh, our Comcast update.
So we'll turn that over to Mr. Melendinos.
Thank you very much, good evening, everyone, um, so a couple of days after our last meeting. On Friday, the twentieth, uh, I executed the contracts for the upgrades at both locations. Uh, new fiber installations, which these are, go through, uh, two phases, first they go to a design team. Um, in speaking to my sales rep this morning, the design team completed their process today, so it then moves to a project management phase. Uh, where they pull in whatever contractors they need and installation services. To actually get the installation going, put wires up on the pole, get, um, things run to the building, stuff like that. Uh, that should start in the next few days. And, uh, our sales rep informed me that there's a, a COVID escalation he can apply to these orders. Which I asked him to do, he said it should reduce our, uh, turnaround time from sixty days. Down to maybe thirty or so days from when the, um, project management phase actually starts. So that should be in the next few days, which puts us in, uh, the first couple of weeks of January. To get completion, so that's the date we're hoping for at this point. Uh, that's really all I have for an update, so I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the committee? No, I think that was pretty clear, okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And our survey feedback is our next agenda item.
So I'll turn it over now to Mrs. Scott.
Hello, everyone, this is Annika Scott, um, I'm gonna share my screen so we can take a look at the feedback results. From the second full month of school. Can everyone see it? Okay. Uh, overall, the, the feedback, uh, results were similar to the, the month previous, but, um. We are seeing people settling into routines, um, still appreciating the in-person communication. We'll, you'll notice a great appreciation for our teachers and connecting with teachers. And also, um, some raised concerns over COVID. For obvious reasons, so safety was the first, um, section of, of the survey that we wanted to present, I, we. Show that it is similar, there's just a slight, um. Decrease for each of these. And the, again, uh, one for safety was not comfortable with the safety measures and protocols and a five was very comfortable. So this is LHS. LMS. Turkey Hill. And the primary school, and again, we didn't survey the primary school students. For communication, um, we pulled out the themes here, I also wanted to point out. Um, certainly there was other pointed feedback that we'll take into consideration, but just wanted to. Point out the themes, very similar types of communication they're finding supportive, in addition to the new COVID dashboard that we have, um. Families and students are appreciating direct comments on student work and in terms of additional communication, um. Of course, you know, staff and families are looking for any information on COVID they can. Uh, we now had gone through the end of quarter and so some concern over just. Uh, being notified about missing work, we do use Power School, families can, can take a look there, but. Looking to be updated on their students' work. As far as LHS goes, uh, we had ninety-six responses from students and a hundred and fifty-seven from parents, which was a. I thought a really good response. About half of our staff responded. And again, very similar, um. Ratings here, a one for teaching and learning was, uh, describing the hybrid or remote learning experience as very difficult. And a five was a great experience. Terms of the strengths for Lunenburg High, um, a lot of the, the same strengths we saw in October. Liking the in-person instruction and interaction, flexibility on remote days, um. There. People commented all over the results about settling into routines, um, students commenting less stress. Because they were able to have some flexibility and, um. You saw them saying they could sleep a little bit more. Appreciation of teachers was coming through, um. This is the hybrid model and the remote model. Gaining skills for independence and time management. Ability to work at their own pace and of course, safety. Challenges, um. You know, keeping track of due dates and workload, still seeing intermittent tech issues, um, whether it be with someone's home. Connection or. um, whether it be with someone's home connection or uh, trying to present at school. You'll notice that some of the, some of the results again are uh, on both ends of the spectrum. For example, some parents saying there's too much work and some saying too little, so we're trying to make sure we maintain a balance there. Um, again, it's a an incredible amount of prep and grading, um, and many class sections for the teachers, so that could remains a a real challenge. And the remote challenges similar to the last time. As far as stress goes, a one was this is really hard, and a five, I am managing well. Some of the opportunities, helping them to feel connected. Um, we have the inclusion of of using breakout rooms this month on the Google Meets. Some of the sports and and club activities they're able to participate in. Uh, screen time is something that we consider. Our seniors have have definitely expressed they're hoping to have some special events. There is a couple of ends with requiring and not requiring live streaming, and of course, um, you know, teachers reaching out about making sure we provide the critical prep time and time for collaboration. Time to work with tech, and again, there's a uh varied response on live streaming. The platforms, we kept the same. I added a few, like Desmos and Kami that teachers are now using, trying to keep track of what teachers are using, so we can um, help support. At the middle school, we had sixty responses from students and ninety-nine from parents. Approximately seventy percent of the staff again. Strengths include uh, responsiveness and supportive teachers, building rapport within their rooms and with teachers. Remote, the safety, but also um, engaging and communicative teachers. Some of the digital resources, they're appreciating quality work. And then challenges, um, still some confusion, uh, just like in the live classroom, needing to keep track of different due dates with different classes, different times that things are due. Student engagement can be a challenge for some. And again, increased COVID concerns in the hybrid model. Remote, some comments about the longer days in terms of challenges and screen time. Far as stress goes here, again, it's a this is really hard, and a five for I'm managing well. Similar results to October. It's nice to see the different activities at each building, um, that students are appreciating. There were lots of answers here, um, doing well. I wanted to note that. They do like taking mass breaks and having uh, time to socialize. And again, teachers um, prioritizing the the planning and the meeting time. Middle school platforms, we added a few too as well. And Turkey Hill. Nineteen responses from students and fifty-seven from parents with about half the staff responding. Strengths, uh, that we wanted to point out the lots of comments about connecting with teachers, appreciating the instruction, um, learning new technology. And then remote, some of the same. Again, you see the breakout rooms. Terms of challenges, um, some struggle with focus on remote days is coming through. And the limited social interaction due to safety measures. So these were some of the remote challenges. Stress. Again, a one, this is really hard, and a five, managing well. Kids enjoyed things like the turkey trot. Uh, they have a social emotional learning special area. I I loved seeing the comments about the kids, you know, appreciating specific games either in the classroom, out at recess, or in phys ed. Kids looking for those social times and teachers, um, who ended up, you know, i- at Turkey Hill in particular, I think their grades were due. They had parent conferences um, all in in one crunch of time, so there was a real busy time for them in addition to the the normal planning. And at the primary school, we had seventy-nine, eighty responses from parents and about half the staff. Again, people getting into routines, appreciating that teacher effort, uh, lots of different comments at the primary school about specific uh, things they were learning in class, activities they were participating in in both models. And loving the the consistent meets in remote. Finally, the challenges, again, juggling the two cohorts for teachers. Learning new tech and apps is is a challenge, especially for the younger ages, um, for for families and for students. Seeing the reason the COVID concerns there again. Stress levels. This is really hard and managing well with for a five. Some of the specific primary activities, like the pumpkin contest, the Halloween hat day, um, you're seeing teachers. Uh, I I liked, they noted specifically the positive pom-pom power and uh, some of the remote teachers doing Snapchat or a remote lunch club. Again, those social interactions, so important. Um, loving the school community projects and events, time to socialize. Um, and with teachers, just appreciating communication, looking for, making sure we recognize the challenges in prep time and and providing time to work with new technology that they're learning. In order to better support teaching and learning across all of the surveys, um, again, understanding flexibility, um, parents appreciating the feedback on student work. Some mixed reviews on live streaming there. Teachers uh, wanting time to plan, but also trainings as we can provide. And finally, this is only some of the positive feedback I thought would be important to include. Um, because when you're pulling out, you know, the details of specific strengths and challenges, all, all of these types of comments are are woven throughout all of the surveys, and they were, they were great to read. I mentioned today, um, at our admin meeting, that uh, one comment, you know, a a young student wrote that he wished that we would allow students to hug. But I liked some of the specific um, appreciation of, you know, engaging art projects, music, gym, and all throughout, um, appreciating what the teachers are doing. And again, this was after about eight weeks of of school, so if you think about it in a hybrid model, only having seen the kids a couple of times a week. Any questions from anybody?
Um, Scott, I had one question. Um, now that there are two sets of data, how will you begin to, you've gathered it, you you've put it together like this in terms of, is this something that, um, you know, is is brought at staff meetings or other places to to begin to to look at things that work and don't work?
Yes, definitely. We're we're taking a look at, you know, all of the feedback, the the principals and administrators in each building are taking a look. Some of them, um, if we can address a family specifically, we will. In general, looking at the models, again, none of which are are quite ideal, but how can we tweak and fine-tune? And, you know, if we notice a a theme, um, across a certain team or or in a a given grade level, we we might address something specifically there. Um, and and certainly, it can be a challenge because sometimes things are, you know, for example, the too little work or the too much work, trying to find the the right balance for for every student there. But always looking to fine-tune the model and and find out how people are doing. I think once we continue to get data, we can look at putting things, um, side by side additionally, uh, where this time we only had two sets. We just showed the the plus or minus on the ratings.
Any other? Any other questions, comments from the committee?
I would just ask, I would, I would just offer this, um. We did put some questions on at the request of Jamie Millet, our um, behavioral health coordinator. Um, she has pulled those questions off to look at and analyze the the data there. Um, and we plan to have her at the next meeting to provide an update um, relative to the ways in which we are working to address, um, particularly the stress, um, that many of the staff are feeling. Um, we've been able to put a few things in place, and she'll be able to uh, talk about the things that are in place and the things we're still working towards.
Thank you. All right. Then we will, um, thank you, Mrs. Scott.
You're welcome.
Next item on our agenda is our second read for our policies. We have many policies. Um, so typically, we waive the second reading as well. Um, I will uh, go through the policies. Um, do we have, just a quick question, we have any feedback on any of these, Dr. Burnham?
No.
Okay. So, um, policy changes in, um, policy four, one-one-one dot oh-one, uh, Title Nine Policy Employee Fifty-one oh-one dot oh-one, Student Absences and Excuses. Fifty-one oh-two Enrollment Policy Fifty-one oh-five dot oh-four School Calendar. Fifty-two oh-one Organization of Instruction. Fifty-two oh-one dot oh-one Curriculum Instruction. Fifty-two oh-one dot oh-two Curriculum Adoption. Fifty-two one-three Student Records. Fifty-two twenty-one Co-Curricular and Extracurricular Programs. Fifty-four oh-two Alcohol, Tobacco, and Drug Use by Students Prohibited. Fifty-eight oh-one dot oh-three Title Nine Policy Students. Fifty-eight oh-three Complaints and Grievances. I did wanna note, um, that Ms. Foyle did in public comment, uh, give us feedback regarding school calendar earlier, and that was around the two and a half day minimum. So that was, I just to say, I, we, I'd asked about, had there been anything online? Um, and we did have that one comment, um, from from Ms. Foyle earlier. So, um, I will take a motion from the committee to waive the second reading, and then we would go ahead at, um, at the, when we have the third reading and actually read each policy with its edits.
Ms. Bertrand, can I just add a comment?
Yes.
In regard to the the policy that was discussed in the the public comment. A lot of, a lot of the the language that we see in a lot of policy is uh, MASC recommendations. So it wasn't uh, a specific change for, in regards to the language that, um, Ms. Foyle had mentioned?
Thank you. And yes, I think Dr. Burnham had commented on that as well at our last meeting, that that many of these were, um, were recommended language um, through MASC, yes. So if anyone has a a motion to waive the second reading, I will take that. Ms. Kelly?
Uh, this is Laura Kelly, and I'd like to make a motion to waive the second reading of the policies brought before us tonight.
Mr. Leighton, a second?
Yes, I'll second the motion.
Roll call votes.
Ms. Shapiro?
Yes.
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Leighton?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashambo?
Yes.
And Mrs. Bertrand?
Yes. We are on to public comment, open to anything that the school committee governs. So I'm going to underline, Ms. La, uh, Ms. LeBlanc, I saw your, did I see your hand up?
You did, sorry. Um,
No, it's, you're going in and out, so I I was like, did I see your hand?
I know. I have to get real close to my computer, and it creeps me out. Sorry, everyone. Um, thanks so much. I'm Lisa LeBlanc. I'm the um, president of the Lunenburg Educators Association. And um, just first wanted to say, how great is Warren, which we all know. And um, and Mary Foiled, the work that they've done. I was the third person in their civics community project work, and um, it's just, uh, I think a labor of love for both of them, and for those of us who love this type of community engagement and civic awareness for students. So, um, it's just exciting to have those things coming to school, and nice to say, um, that so many great things are happening. Um, sorry, can you hear me? Okay?
Yes.
Um, and one thing I did wanna um, talk about is the gift card drive that we do annually. The Lunenburg Secretaries uh, organize that every year. The LEA matches up to five hundred dollars of teacher uh, gift cards. Um, last year, it was the maximum for fifty-five hundred. We hope that's the same this year. Just a reminder to the community and to our teachers especially, get those gift cards in. Let someone know that you contributed them. Uh, we look forward to matching and just making sure uh, that we're taking care of our community during uh, every single year, but really especially during this year. So thank you to the secretaries who do that every year, and it's um, it's a lot of work for them. And thank you to the district for continuing, um, that good work. And I guess on the last thing, I was writing an email, um, during the meeting, multitasking, and just realized we are doing ridiculous work, everybody, not just the teachers, but just, um, you know, that phrase, we're building the plane while we fly it. Like, we are talking about things that are presently happening and trying to get going, and it's it's really incredible, um, what we're all trying to make happen. So, um, thanks for all the pieces to parents and students and the district, um, and the teachers for trying to make a really, really situation work. Thank you.
Thank you. Indeed, yes, it is, uh, everyone. Like you said, it is a, it is a writing an email while on a Zoom, while cooking dinner, while doing six other things. Uh, yeah. Trying to keep it all moving. Thank you to everyone for everything they're doing every day. everyone for everything they're doing every day. Anyone, any other comment? I'm having trouble actually seeing here. I I can't tell if a lot of cameras are off, or I'm just not, it's not coming through for me. I'm not seeing any hands raised. Dr. Burnham, do you see any?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Then we will move out of public comment to our reports. Athletic Advisory Committee.
Not met.
Finance Committee.
They have not met since our last meeting either.
Policy Subcommittee.
Oh, sorry. No, we we went, we met last week. Sorry, I was trying to find my unmute button. We're still trucking along. We're doing, we have another meeting next Monday, and we have done some more edits and reviews of some policies, and we'll be ready to present them hopefully at the December 16 meeting.
Thank you. PTO?
We have not met, but just a reminder that the PTO is going to be holding their executive board elections at the next meeting on Monday, December 14.
School Councils.
Primary school has not met since our last school committee meeting.
Turkey Hill?
Turkey Hill plans to meet on Monday, the 21st.
Middle School?
The Middle School Council met on Monday, and much of what was discussed was brought up today. The excitement about the new Chromebooks. There was discussion that they've had 15 students return to campus in the hybrid model on the 18th of November. The cohorts have 13 or 14 in them, so the sizes are all managing fine, and the kids are doing well. There was discussion about the eighth grade piloting the live stream, and which you've already discussed tonight. And we had Jamie Millet give us an update on behavioral health and a discussion about the support teams where teachers can refer students at the middle school. And Jamie also talked about how her case level has gone up quite a bit since the beginning of the school year. And that's about what we have.
High School?
We're going to be meeting next Tuesday, the 8th.
Capital Planning met last Tuesday and a week ago Tuesday, and heard, had a presentation from Police and Fire, looking at their capital planning requests. Meeting again next Tuesday, the 10th for, or the, what's, next Tuesday is the 8th, sorry, next Tuesday, the 8th, and we'll be hearing from the DPW at that meeting. Wellness Advisory?
We have not met.
Pac-Sal?
They will be meeting in January.
TCP Design Committee?
Yes, we met Monday. We plan to meet on the 14th as well at 5:30. We basically had a meeting planning out the the rest of our meetings potentially, to try to get to that final, final result, final plan, as well as a cost analysis, which is, the hope is, with all our meetings from now till the end of January, we should have that around the end of January, and planning to be ready for the the May town meeting. The architect's now going to be going through the fine details, reaching out to the department heads and going over the details of more specific details of like flooring, lighting, walls, that kind of more specific information. So we'll be working on that, always looking for input from the public as well to attend the meetings. The slides, if if people miss the the town meeting, the fall town meeting, the slides are on the website. And as the newly elected secretary, I've been sharing those out on Facebook groups, so you can hopefully see those too.
And Lifelong Learning Advisory has not met since our last meeting. Topics for future discussion. Any committee members have a topic they want to discuss? All right, then I will take a motion to, oh, wait, you do, Brian?
Yeah.
Sorry, I missed you. I scrolled past.
That's okay. I was kind of last minute. In policy, we had talked about one of the policies, and it was it was kind of in regards to public comment. And one thing that we may be able to put on a a future agenda would be going over the protocols that we do for the the school committee, because there was some language that we want to discuss. Rather than potentially doing it in policy, maybe we could just talk about our protocols and potentially change the language there, add some language that could avoid us having to take care of it in policy, where it might restrict what we want to do in in public
Sounds good. All right, then I will take a motion to adjourn. Go scroll, Ms. Shapiro.
This is Sophie Shapiro, and I motion to adjourn our meeting at 9:06 PM.
Is there a second? Ms. Arshambo?
This is Carol Arshambo, and I would second that.
Roll call vote.
Ms. Shapiro?
Yes.
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Leighton?
Yes.
Mrs. Arshambo?
Yes.
And Mrs. Bertrand?
Good night, everybody.
Have a good evening.
Oh, one quick thing, are we meeting this weekend? No, no. Okay. Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bye.
Have a good night.